At this time, I'll call Suffolk City Council work session to order. Councilman Fawcett and Councilman Johnson will not be attending our work session and both have been excused. We have two items for discussion this afternoon. The first one is the Chantel telecommunications overview. Mr. Manager?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Deputy City Manager Kevin Hughes will introduce our guest room Chantel this evening, or this afternoon, actually.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, good afternoon. It is a pretty impressive and significant time in the city of Suffolk related to broadband and telecom, to say the least. We've been able to move forward on three significant initiatives that we've talked about for quite some time, being the broadband ring, the advancement into the rural area, and I'm proud to bring to you today a little more information related to competition that'll assist our residents, one that's been talked about and requested for quite some time. And so, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Don Gibson. He is the Director of Sales with Chantel. He'll give you a little bit more information about what the plan is here in Suffolk. As you're aware, about a year ago, this council approved a right-of-way agreement to allow them to start the planning process. Within that agreement, I gave them a three-year window to complete a franchise agreement, which we are neck-deep into, and then you'll have more information on this meeting, as well as here in these slides regarding the point-of-presence request for a conditional use permit that advances some of those strategies. So, without further ado, Don?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Don Gibson, as he said, Director for Chantel, and I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, council, to speak to you this afternoon and hopefully can answer any questions you may have. Please don't take my casual attire as a lack of respect. I arrived in Suffolk early today and I decided to go have lunch, and my shirt and tie, by the time that I walked back out, was soaking wet. And I thought, well, I'd better put on at least a clean shirt. So, we'll go ahead and get started, as today, we wanted to talk about the, all right, I'm going to have to go backwards one. The request for the conditional use permit, and I'm going to move through these first slides pretty quickly, because I think you're probably already familiar with who we are, but I don't want to not answer any questions that you have, so please stop me. We're a 120-year-old company. We're a publicly traded company on the NASDAQ under the symbol S-H-E-N, and it is Shannon Door Telecommunications. The explanation on glow fiber, we are Shannon Door Telecommunications, we trade as Chantel, and the product glow fiber is the product that we are building in Suffolk. So, it is a product name. We build advanced networks to provide cable, phone, and TV service to rural and not-so-rural markets. We are, right now, growing very aggressively with our glow fiber product. We build those advanced networks. We have local customer support. When I say local, of course, mean Virginia-based. Throughout Virginia, a big part of those people, right now, work from home, and will likely be work from home, but they are people that are Virginians working here in Virginia. We are very involved in local communities with investment and partnerships. We have 860 employees currently. About a year ago, we sold a big portion of our business, that was the wireless business, which cut our size by about two-thirds. We were the Sprint affiliate across eight states, and we really focus everything now on the growth of broadband. $241 million in annual revenue right now, and we're a profitable company, offering fiber to the home. This says 93,000 homes. That increases every day. We are building throughout many markets, and I'll touch on those. Our mission, and this is a mission that was developed a long time ago, ensure that rural communities have access to the same level of telecommunications services as those found anywhere in the U.S. As you might imagine, companies like AT&amp;T, wonderful companies, but they focused on New York City, on Atlanta, on the markets that they could go into, get big share, and make money quickly. We currently have 7,600 miles of fiber in county, and that doesn't mean a lot to you, but I'll just point to the map, maybe a little hard for you to see, but the blue dots, starting up in Pennsylvania there, and, put my glasses on so I can see it, Carlisle, Hanover, down into Frederick, Maryland, Martinsburg, Charlestown, Winchester, Virginia, Royal Virginia, Harrisonburg, Waynesboro, Roanoke, Lynchburg, Blacksburg, all places that we are currently actively building glow. We have customers there, we're building the product, and those builds continue. If you look at the red dots, Lancaster County, York County in Pennsylvania, Salisbury, Maryland, then you come down into that lower triangle, James City County, Williamsburg, York County, and Suffolk, we all have, we have franchise agreements and are in some stage of building those markets. We've also just recently announced, and it's a daily process, Hanover County, outside Richmond, as another market that we're building. We currently pass 332,000 homes with broadband and fiber to 500 cell sites. So, those are cell sites that provide wireless coverage like T-Mobile and others. Glow fiber, system overview. It will be 100% fiber network. There are a lot of companies that will talk about fiber, and it may, a portion of the route may be fiber, but not, this will be a fiber product from start to end. We will offer a triple play, which is an internet product, a video product, and a phone product. Ultra-high-speed bandwidth. The technology is the gold standard of fiber that we build, and today, we sell, provide and sell one-gig and two-gig plans to the consumer. That may not mean a lot to you, but it's really more than anybody ever needs. Not only is it more than you need, but the technology is such that it's only limited by the devices on either end. So, it's somewhat future-proof, because as we recently introduced a router that will provide a wireless network for a two-gig speed, that wasn't available until recently. But the fiber itself is the gold standard. Better reliability than cable or DSL, and I would encourage you, don't take my word for it, go out and do Google reviews, search Google, you'll see all the comments about glow fiber and the people that have it and how they feel about it. Symmetrical bandwidth, that means your speeds up and down are the same. At one point, that wasn't as important, but now, as people work from home, as they video conference, the speeds coming in are just as important than the speeds going out, and the product is a symmetrical product, unlike what is available for your citizens today. Facilities upgrades for beyond 10-gig speeds. 10-gig, crazy, but we're delivering some 10-gig packages now, typically for industrial use, but the facilities can be upgraded to 10-gig. Benefits. We're making a significant capital investment in the market. Just today, we verbally agreed to build one of the largest HOAs on the East Coast, and I'll say in this market, in the eastern market. I won't specifically name that, but if you think about it, you can probably understand who it would be over in the Williamsburg area. And it's, and that one build is a $10-million investment, and those are the kinds of capital investments you make to build fiber. Two, competitive offering. Everywhere we've built our product, we see the competitors who are incumbents there. First, we see them immediately respond in price, our product, and I'll go through the pricing, but they will immediately start calling customers and attempting to get them under contract and even lowering prices. I can't say what will happen in Suffolk. I can only say what's happened in the past where we built product. Positive economic development impact, I don't have to tell you guys, I know that's a major part of what you do and consider every day. Broadband access is critical, and not just broadband access, it's no longer just the standard that is broadband, it's one gig, it's one gig and above. Affordable connectivity program. We participate in the affordable connectivity program. We offer a plan, that is a $35 plan, that can provide the lower socio-economic disadvantaged person internet for zero, because with the $35 plan, we charge $35, they qualify for that, and their internet costs them nothing. Timeline is municipal engagement, which obviously, we've already done, utility engagement, engineering and construction. We've engineered this product, and we know what the market's going to look like. Construction, and this slide is one that's a little new to me, so I'll take questions, but we, one of the first steps that we have to do to start this construction is create our point of presence, and that point of presence is nothing more than where our product comes in, and then we distribute it from that point. A lot of times, I will tell people, at one point, we'd ride around and we'd see Verizon central offices everywhere, and that would be a point of presence. Typically, didn't have windows, just a brick building sitting somewhere, and they would distribute from there, and the limitations were, they had to build a lot of those, because you could only go out a certain amount of feet with that copper to be able to provide that product. Well, it's really no different. This is a point of presence, but we're not limited in the scope that we can produce. We just have this one point of presence that we're looking to create. Local jobs will include marketing, sales, and operations. We will hire a group of people in the markets that are these eastern markets that include Suffolk. So, if we're successful, and you know anybody that's looking for a job, please point on my way. It's a very competitive workplace right now. Community engagement, and I think it's in a later slide, we've had discussions on the Peanut Festival, we want to be a part of the Peanut Festival, and other items like that, that are important to the city. Here's our pricing. Again, I would say generally, and we typically compete against the incumbent that is either Cox or Comcast. Those are the big players in the markets we've built recently. And we will typically, it's not unusual at all for us to go in and someone's $225 cable bill, which is internet and cable, will run about 160 with us, and they'll have a higher speed, because we're going to sell them that one-gig product up and down for $80, and then they can add video packages or use over-the-top streaming packages, either. So, when we typically see, once we're up and running, those responses in pricing pretty quickly. And I notice one picture being taken, and we'd be glad to provide you with the information in writing, that way you can look through it. I just don't want to move while you're blurring the picture or whatever. Again, I'll mention this, and it's not here, we offer a $35 plan, which is below the 65, that was specifically designed to address the ACP program, which is the program now that the government has to provide, affordable connectivity. And that was designed where that $35 would cover the cost of internet for anyone, and you can go to the government website, the ACP website, and look at qualification, they are very broad, they're very liberal. If someone receives any type of assistance at all, free lunches, anything like that, they qualify for that ACP, which could give them a connectivity program at $0. One of the things we're sensitive to, and I didn't speak at the last time we were here, but I was here, and we heard you loud and clear, we didn't do a good job communicating with your citizens. And so, on the 16th of June, we came down with a group of four people, and the, and later in the presentation, we'll talk about where this property is, but I'll generally tell you, and my guess is, you know, it's in the back parking lot of the Suffolk Social Services Building. It's one side borders the planners' parking lot, another side borders, the closest side borders the back of the planners' facility, and then, of course, it borders the building that is the city building, it's on city property, and then there are some neighborhoods separated by a pond there that we went out and talked to. But we came out and we took a flyer, and we visited 160 homes that day, and we put those flyers in people's hands, we talked to people at the door, we used a group of our internal employees, I was a part of that effort. We came down and wanted to let everyone know what was going on, and so, we, and I'll show you the flyer, but it announced what was going to be a day that you can come and ask questions. And then, two days later, we set up on the site where the POP is actually going to be, a tent, had people there, and fielded questions from the neighborhood. We knocked an additional 250 homes on that day and distributed this information and had conversations at people's homes. The informational tent was set up on the 16th, two days later, from 12 to 4:00. We had meaningful conversations at that tent. There were a lot more than 12, but 12 of those wanted our service. They were interested, they were glad to hear that there might be a choice in broadband, and they were very happy. We didn't have one negative comment during that effort, and we touched, again, the first day, 160 homes, the second, 250. I don't want to mislead you, some of those people weren't home. We left them a flyer, we asked them to come to the event the next day, and I'll show you that flyer, but all the conversations were positive. This is the flyer that we used that first day, and it's just informational session, glow fiber, internet of view, good news, glow fiber's bringing high-speed fiber-optic services to your neighborhood. As part of the construction process, we'll be housing equipment near the Suffolk City Social Services Building. We will be in your area, if you have any questions about our services or construction plans, stop by. And then, there's the date that we were there, and the hours that we were there, and the exact location, we had a big purple tent, I'll show you a picture, plus both a website and a number to call if you had any further questions. And our goal was to make sure that if there was anyone not just living within sight, I think you know the neighborhoods that are there, and we wanted to make sure if people had questions, we were there to answer the questions, and tell them what the facility was going to be, what it was going to house. This is just a copy, and this is in the social services, and I will tell you, the site that the actual building will be on is about eight or 10 spaces up from where that tent sits right now. That is the back corner of that social services parking lot, and we'll show it graphically on another. Civic organizations. We know that Suffolk is a town that civic organizations are an important part of, as they should be, and as many cities are. We received a list from the planning department of all of those that we could, we've made two attempts to contact every civic organization, regardless of whether they boarded this site or not, to talk about glow, to give informational sessions, to offer those up. We were able to successfully contact two of those, and those are listed. I'm not sure we should have listed the president's name there, one of them, but we did contact her, and she was on vacation, but we're going to come back down and speak to her group when she's ready for us to do that, and whatever information is needed, along with the Lake Kennedy Civic League, we were able to contact those. We've not received callbacks from the others, but in every case, we've left messages, we've tried to reach them, and we will continue to do so, because as people tell us every day, and I think you know this, we're not a contract product. We earn the customer's business every day. They could sign up today and go back to Cox or whomever the provider is a week from now. And so, this is not just about informing them of this move, it's also about building some type of loyalty. Danny?
Good afternoon. My name is Danny Agee, I'm manager of network planning, and I'll talk a little bit about the POP facility here. And as Don, he's already covered a little bit about this, but in any municipality that we're building into, we have to have the point of presence there. This point of presence houses our fiber-optical gear, and so, it actually, all the fibers that are coming back from the homes within Suffolk will terminate in this facility, or one very similar like this. In this facility also, you have what we call network fibers, and these network fibers will go to the landing station and up through Williamsburg and back to QTS, and then the other side will go back toward east, back into our network within the central part of Virginia. The reason that we do this is, is if you have some sort of an outage, if someone hits a pole, if someone digs up our fiber, we always have a secondary connection that will keep the POP up and continue to have services within the POP. We also have two internet access points. You have one in Ashburn, Virginia, and you have one in Atlanta, so same similar concept. We have dual diversity points of contact, if something happened in Ashburn, we would route all of our traffic to Atlanta, vice versa. We make sure that our connections at each point do not go above the 50% threshold, because if we have an outage, right, it moves some of your traffic over to the other one, and we'll be more capable of handling that as well. As Don pointed out, you know, the fiber optics that we're building through Suffolk, and the driver is residential, and the equipment on the end of it really dictates, you know, the type of service or the size of circuit that you can get on that. But the secondary benefit is that you have, you know, other customers, business customers, enterprise customers, you have carrier customers, that can get much, even much larger circuits. So, when you have the median out there, which is your fiber versus your traditional copper, you change the equipment on either side, and you can get a lot different services, or a lot more services. So, if someone with a larger organization, they may even want 100-gig service, which is capable now, once we have this fiber out in our vicinity. This is the proposed POP location, this is 135 Hall Avenue. As Don had already pointed out, we're close to where they had sent the ten up, we'll have our POP sitting at this location here. And I think the 28,000, that is the Suffolk homes passed, correct?
Yeah, correct.
That is the number of projected homes that will be passing in Suffolk. So, you know, a couple months ago, when we were in here, we took your advice, we went out and found something a little bit more suitable for this particular location.
And let me say this about the 28,000 homes, that's the number that we're comfortable that we've engineered, that we can build to. I'll use Lynchburg as an example. We then come back and do infield, where we build additional properties as a second wave of that, and one of the things we will be somewhat variable on is, we never, a lot of this construction is underground construction, and you guys have had to deal with underground construction, I'm sure. So, it's not always definable until you can get in, and, I mean, you may hit rock and be in a situation where it would cost you a million dollars to service three homes. And obviously, we don't ever know that, we design it, and we use our best-case efforts to determine those, but that is the number we plan, and typically, that will grow past that number, not in the other direction. It's a very conservative.
And it's great, sir. I have it with another provider, and when I purchased my home, where I'm living at now, I made sure that I had this type of technology, because I had younger kids that needed internet access as they were in high school and going on to college, and they needed to have that higher speed. So, it's a benefit to all the homeowners who can say, if they sell their home, hey, I actually have fiber to the doorstep here of the home as well, so.
And I think we mentioned it in our last presentation, but we track this, and we can give you some data, but home values increase as a result of having fiber. There are people that want to live in areas and work from home that can't live in those areas and work from home, and they'll pay a premium when fiber is available. And that may be a temporary situation, I don't know, it depends on what the future looks like in terms of builds and availability, but home values have increased, depending on where it is, anywhere from 3% to 8% when fiber's installed.
And that concludes our presentation. Do you have any questions for either Don or himself? And this is Biff Johnson, he is our civil designer, if there's any civil engineering questions as well.
Don, Andy, thank you very much for your presentation, council. Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you very much.
Let me get your turn.
Thank you very much for your presentation. If you find rock down here, please tell me. It's going to be somebody's wall or something that fell in years ago, I think.
We don't anticipate any rock here.
I actually got the call in Maryland this week, up in Frederick, and we hit a B-rock.
So, funny that you mentioned that, one of our sales reps gave us something down here to, I have a sales engineering team to design stuff, and he said, I better not see rock come back on this proposal, so.
Let me ask you this, as far as connectivity, you know, we have charter here, can anyone sign up with you, wherever they are, they can sign right up with you?
Once we build our fiber product, if it's available to their home, when it's available, anyone can sign up.
Okay. And how about a sales office? Do you want to have a sales office?
We do not plan to have a sales office specifically in Suffolk. We do plan to have a sales office somewhere in the region, and the region is those that I mentioned, Williamsburg to James City County. Now, we've got both website and, I'm sorry. We've got both website and phone support that is available, but we do not plan to have an actual sales office here in town.
Well, how do you get equipment to use your service? How does that all work?
So, fiber's a little different from cable in that it cannot be self-installed. There's a danger. The light is so intense that we have to install the product with a trained technician who also does the training in the home. So, he will bring that piece of fiber, a little smaller than your finger, into the home, he will attach what is known as an Eero router that will provide, because we now provide everything wirelessly, as opposed to what's typically the coax that runs around, and he'll install that. Depending on the size of the home, if they need two routers, we'll put two of them in. And you will have what we call wall-to-wall Wi-Fi at whatever speed you subscribe to.
Okay. Sounds interesting. Thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? I'm hearing none, not, obviously, this is great news, I mean, we knew you were coming, but along with groundbreaking the other day for the VADI program and Southside Network Authority broadband, I mean, we're getting there, and we're getting there quickly. we're getting there quickly, which is good news. I want to thank you for investing in our city, continuing to invest in our city. And I also want to thank you for the process that you just went through, you know, to engage our citizens and let them know what's available. I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
I know you said that this access point could accommodate 28,000 homes. And if that's the case, I mean, that's a good chunk of Suffolk. I mean, that's most of it.
The design covers most of Suffolk.
And so this service is available to anyone who has existing service with someone now. And I don't know if you have this number, but do you have a feel for how many homes you will be offering service to that today do not have service to their homes?
I don't have a number of what the underserved is in Suffolk. I really don't know that. You know, this is an investment on our part. It's not a, we participate in some VADI grants in some rural areas. Franklin County, we just announced Franklin County that we're doing it over there. So I don't know the underserved population here and I apologize for that. I'll give you a little bit of insight on how we build. Once we bring that point of presence in, we will build the city outward in what we determine, what we call an LCP. An LCP is just a term for a smaller neighborhood. So it might be anywhere from 200 to 300 homes at a time. And we're weary the building aerial, which is very quick and very easy. And we always follow whatever the current utilities follow. So if a neighborhood is aerial, so their electric is serviced through the air, if a neighborhood is buried, we follow buried. So wherever the utility goes is the way we will go. But then we'll build those groups of 300, 400 homes outward from that point of presence until we ultimately build out the entire.
Okay. So in a nutshell, where will you start? And you briefly explained how you determine where you go from there, but just give me a little bit better of an idea how that's going to work?
Well, I can and I can even give you some more specifics, not that I have them in front of me, but those neighborhoods that are close to the POP will likely be some of the first neighborhoods built. And those are the areas that we will grow out for, because it won't all happen at one time, nor would you want it to. Because, you know, and I like to be transparent and if I'm nothing else, I'm honest. You're going to, someone at the city is going to feel the call about the glow truck sitting on the corner with the hole in the road. Or they're going to feel the, you know, feel the call about they came through my yard even though it's a right-of-way and they thought it was a yard. Those things are going to happen. It's underground construction. And they're going to be people saying, well, they, my friend Joe just called me and he's got glow and he loves it, but I don't have it yet and I'm not going to get it for three months. It's only because we're going through that orderly process of building to allow, so that you don't get calls from all over the city. And that growth that makes sense to get that service to everyone. I tell people, you know, and you guys have probably dealt with this, I was in the waste business for a while. No one wanted a landfill, but everybody wanted to do something with their trash. I was in the wireless business after that. No one wanted a tower, but everyone wanted the service to work at their home. It's similar. That construction part is a little bit of the pain point. The good thing is, once we, and we restore everything to light condition. If it was sod that we tore up in the right-of-way, we will replace it with sod. If it's grass, we will reseed it and replace it that way. So we're going to, anything that we do in that process, we will fix.
Okay. Well, once again, thank you for offering your service in Suffolk. It's going to offer our citizens, a lot of our citizens, another option. And it'll also offer some of our citizens that are not served in all a way to get broadband. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and we're very excited about the future.
I'm sorry, Councilman Williams?
Yes. Thank you guys for a great presentation. I just, you answered most of my questions.
Yes, sir.
I just have one question. I know that you guys had purchased the property on Fifth Street.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sorry that didn't work out. And I know that you're going to be at the Hef Department, which I think is a great location. My question is, are you purchasing the property from the city or is it being leased to you?
It is a, and I'll get Danny to confirm this, but it's a lease.
It's a lease.
It's a long-term lease.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Council, any other questions or comments? If not, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you again.
And we'll move forward to our next item, which is a financial update. Mr. Manager, please provide overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, this time Director of Finance, Tealyn Hanson, will give the overview. And this is going to address, as you're aware, we met with the rating agencies on Monday and we'll be providing some of the information that we shared with those folks along. Of course, we met, we were on phone calls with them along with our financial advisors from Davenport. But Tealyn?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. You just really like to say the things that I'm about to say. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. I am here to provide you with a financial update as it relates to where we are with the bond issuance process. Consider yourself fortunate, this presentation that we gave to the three rating agencies on Mondays, Monday is over 75 pages long and this is a very much condensed version of that. I think it took us 90 minutes apiece to get through it on Monday. So where we are with the bond issuance, we are very much in the middle of the bond issuance. I am working very closely with the financial advisors and with our bond attorneys to get all of our relevant documents and bond offering documents to where they need to be. As the manager mentioned, we did meet with the rating agencies on Monday. We met with all three of them. It was a very long day. And if you were there, you got to hear me talk for a very long time. And then at your regular session tonight, we are holding two public hearings, one for the issuance of the general obligation bonds, which cover all of the general government CIP projects, and one for our inaugural issuance of the stormwater revenue bonds, which we are undertaking revenue-type bonds, very, very, very much similar to what we do in the utility fund for the stormwater fund in order to accomplish the projects that are in the CIP for stormwater. So a little bit about the rating agency meetings. Again, we met with all three of them on Monday, the 18th. We do meet with them annually or every time we have to do a bond issuance, which for us is annually, but we do meet with them annually and update because we are required to get a rating on the new bonds that we're about to issue and they update their ratings on the existing bonds. So we, as a city, are AAA rated from all three rating agencies. We have to meet with them annually in order for them to reaffirm that we are still in the status of AAA. We do not have the results of those meetings back yet from Monday. We are expecting those the end of next week. We do not anticipate any problems though, but I cannot say for sure that they have reaffirmed our ratings because they do not publish, they won't publish that information until late next week. We provided the rating agencies a variety of information and updates on the demographics of the city. We talked a lot about our increasing population, our decreasing unemployment numbers, just general statistics about the city, our real estate assessments, our personal property tax assessments, that type of stuff. We gave them a very detailed presentation on where all of those statistics are headed for the city and where they are. We gave a very detailed presentation on all the economic development activities throughout the city and what has taken place in the last year. We talked about the fiscal year 23 budget, what was included in that, what the priorities were in establishing that budget. And we also gave them some updated financial results and some projected financial results for fiscal year in 2022, which we are now, I think, 20 days into the brand-new fiscal year. This and the next couple of slides look a little different. These are screenshots directly out of the presentation book, the presentation that we gave to the rating agencies. So I apologize if they're a little bit hard to read, but I'll go over what they say. So we presented, we started out with an overview of where we are from a financial standpoint and where we've been. And so we talked about the fact that we have for over a decade had very positive financial results within the city. We have added to the available fund balance or the unassigned fund balance every year since 2011. We had an 8 point, 11.8, excuse me, million dollar surplus when we finished up fiscal year 2021. And we are projecting a surplus in the neighborhood of $6.9 million for fiscal 2022. That $6.9 million was based on the third quarter projections that you all received a couple of months ago. We talked about the fact that we meet all of our financial policies, including our unassigned financial policy. And what this slide showed them was our history of strengthening those policies. And so we told that, you know, we felt it necessary to point out to them that back in 2010, we increased the unassigned fund balance policy from 10% to 12%. We increased it again from 15% to 19% in fiscal year, in 2019. And then in the green box, we pointed out to them that just last September, you as a council took action to strengthen those policies even more by increasing that percentage to 20% for the unassigned fund balance and then adding the two new reserve funds with a budget stabilization fund as well as a capital reserve fund. And explain to them how that mechanism works and how those get funded when we have surpluses at the end of the year. This has even tinier font on it for you, but what this showed the rating agencies was our actual results as of fiscal year 2021, our projected results that we're looking at for fiscal year 2022, and then compared to the last column there is the fiscal year 2023 budget. We just showed this to them so that they can see the history of the growth. There was another slide that had five or six years worth of history on it so that they can see the trends that we have of positive results. We wanted to point out to them on this slide that we budget very conservatively, and I think we said that multiple times, that we, as a city, are very conservative in our budgeting. We don't count things that are not on the books yet. We don't project out real estate that's coming on until it actually shows up. And that, and pointed out to them that the fiscal year 23 budget was structurally balanced. We didn't require any use of our reserves in order to balance that budget and that council approved that budget unanimously. Some of the key drivers that the rating agencies look at when they are factoring what our ratings should be, and so we pointed out to them, took the opportunity to point out to them how we meet these drivers that they look at. And so they look at, they always look at the management of the city. They look how well we are managed. We pointed out to them that we have a very seasoned and stable management team and that we have a long history of adherence to our financial policies and that, again, we continue to enhance those financial policies when it is appropriate to do so. Of course, they look at our finances. So we made sure to point out to them that we live within our financial means, that we show multi-year trends of positive financial results and continued positive growth, that we have a very strong cash flow position, and that we are very competitive as it relates to our tax rate. Believe me, we took the opportunity to point out to them multiple times that we lowered the tax rate and gave some tax relief to the citizens during fiscal year, for fiscal year 23 budget. They also look at our debt levels and we took the opportunity to show them that we have a highly manageable debt program. In the slides tonight at your regular session, you will see where we are as it relates to our debt policies and we are well within our debt policies. We are not in any kind of danger of getting, of exceeding them or not following them. And that we have a very long history in our utility fund of a self-sustaining debt program there and that we issue the revenue bonds for the utility fund and that it doesn't require help from the general fund in order to meet those debt obligations. And finally, they look at the economy. And so we showed them that we have had continued growth and development throughout the city, that we continue to reinvest in the community and that we have a healthy tax base that is growing. Some of the other things that we talked about that are not on these slides, we talked a lot about the broadband initiatives and the universal broadband that is coming much sooner than we had originally anticipated. We talked a lot about, they call them ESG factors, they're environmental, social and governance factors. And those, that really ties into how we deal with climate change and how we deal with some of the issues that are out in society now. And we talked a lot about, as well as cybersecurity. So we pointed out our strengths in all of those areas. The meetings went very, very well. We really didn't have a lot of questions coming back to us from the rating agencies. They will continue to ask us questions if they need clarifying, they need clarified answers. They'll continue to reach out to our financial advisors and me over the next week, but I do not anticipate that that's going to be a whole influx of questions. They seemed very receptive to the presentation and they were very happy with what we told them. So what comes next? As I said, this process is ongoing. We are still in the middle of it. So we're going to hold the public hearings tonight at your regular session. At those public hearings, our financial advisors will lay out the calendar, as it were, as it relates to these bond issuances, but we do anticipate issuing the, selling the general obligation bonds somewhere around the 10th of August. We anticipate receiving, and all the rating agencies said that they would be able to get us the ratings by the end of next week or the end of this month, which is the same. And as I said before, we do anticipate that we're going to sell the GO bonds around the 10th of August. The VRA revenue bonds, we're doing through a bank loan and we received bids back on that and we received some very positive feedback and very positive responses from that effort. So we are moving forward, full steam ahead. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Council, questions or comments? Quiet out there this evening. I just want to, having been to the meeting, and I guess we did something similar last year, but each rating agencies, about an hour and a half. And it was basically the same presentation and as Ms. Hanson alluded to, it was like 75 pages, but it's very, very, very well-prepared. My hats off to Tealyn and Kevin. They did most of the presentation. City manager was there also. Treasurer Ron Williams was there, Davenport and Company, David Rose and Kyle.
Kyle Laus, LA US.
We'll just call him Kyle, from Davenport and Company. And, you know, my opening remark to all three of the agencies, and of course, we are AAA rated, and the bottom line is if you liked us last year, you'll love us this year because that's the trajectory that we took. The numbers speak for themselves. We are probably, in my feeble opinion, in one of the most enviable positions of most municipalities throughout the Commonwealth and maybe even the country as to where we are. And a lot of that is because of exactly what Ms. Hanson mentioned as far as the financial policies we have, being fiscally conservative, spending our money wisely. We're blessed with significant growth. Our biggest concern is how we manage that growth. And when we look to the future, you know, your AAA rating is not only what your credit report looks like today, but you're projecting what it's going to look like in the future because when you're offering bonds, these are out there for a long period of time. So it's a matter of rating the security of those bonds. So can, you know, to put it all in relevance, the city of Suffolk probably has an 800 credit score right now. So I want to thank everyone who is involved in that process. I know, I don't know, Tealyn probably thought about it at night, going through those things three times in a row, and I learned a lot, you know, and I can probably retain it after the third time. So once again, great job, Mr. Manager. Thank you for putting all that together and look forward to doing it next year. But if I was a gambling man, 10,000 to one odds, you know, we'll be reaffirmed again with our Triple As. Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. One question. In the rating companies and how they rate us, do they change their rating styles or methods that would affect us in any way down the road of how they score us?
Somebody fed you that question, didn't they? It's interesting that you say that. They do periodically review their rating, what they call their ratings criteria. Moody's, the rating agency Moody's, has issued some proposed ratings criteria that they are going to move towards. We talked to them in advance. We're not sure exactly what the effect is going to be. We, our financial advisors have run us through the new ratings criteria and we score very, very high. But this particular rating is still under their old criteria. They have not implemented their new criteria as of yet. And I will say that they do periodically look at the new rating, at their criteria and what's changing. And they do periodically change it, but we keep, we may, we stay on top of all of that.
I just don't want us to be.
As the manager asked me the same question a couple of weeks ago or last week, and I have the new ratings criteria sitting in, all printed out on my desk, and my intention is to go through it and make sure that we're shored up where we need to be shored up. But we do anticipate there being an issue with the new criteria.
Thank you very much.
Council, any other questions? Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, Ms. Hanson, once again for your presentation.
Thank you.
That concludes our work session, and at this time, I understand we do have a motion for a closed meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please read the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711, A8 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring legal advice of such counsel. And the discussion consideration or interviews for prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment appointment and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city. Specifically, the appointments are shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the Clean Communities Commission, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Sister Cities Commission, the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, and the Western Tidewater Water Authority.
Counsel, a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval. Councilman Williams, Councilman Goldberg?
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
Mayor Dooman, I'd like to do a roll call, if that's possible, please. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of 6 to 0.
That concludes our work session, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.